Hi, so. It's going okay.
Okay. I'd like to call the order to October 13, 2020. City Council, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember LaCura?
Here.
Councilmember McFall?
Here.
The approval of the agenda, please.
A move approval of the revised agenda, Mr. Mayor.
I'll support.
And discussion? Dissension? We have an agenda. Special presentations, like to do the proclamation naming October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month program is dedicated to the increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer and whereas an estimated 325,000 Americans will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year. One in eight women in the U.S. will develop invasive breast cancer over the course of their life. Making it the second most commonly diagnosed form of cancer among American women. And whereas this resolution will highlight the ongoing efforts to raise awareness for breast cancer research, detection and treatment is owed to the 42,000 women expected to die this year from breast cancer. And as well as the 3.5 million survivors to do everything possible to support and fight against this terrible disease. Being known that I, Michael Webb, Mayor, do hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In the city of Hazel Park, the state of Michigan, I call upon the residents, community agencies, organizations, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent, treat, and ultimately cure breast cancer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of my wife Diane, who is a 28-year breast cancer survivor, I want to thank you for that proclamation. Very important cause and very important effort to support.
And basis to Resolution 10-020-20, Oakland County Parks and Recreation endorsement.
Mr. Mayor, if you wish, I can read this into the record before council takes action?
I can read this one and read the next one.
Very good.
Whereas Oakland Park, Oakland County Parks and Recreation has provided park facilities, programs, special events, services, and residents to Oakland County since 1966. Whereas Oakland County Parks and Recreation creates unique and exciting recreation experiences for 2 million visitors to its parks each year. An additional 1.6 million residents via BI, its outreach services and whereas Oakland County Parks and Recreation creates and supports community collaborations. So that all residents of all abilities have access to quality recreation experiences and enhanced quality of life. And whereas Oakland County Parks and Recreation has enhanced local city, village, and township special events programs and day casts for children since 1982 through its Recreation Assistance Partnership Program, voting as much as 250,000 annually to this effort. Whereas the Oakland County Parks and Recreation Commission's mission is to provide quality recreation experiences and encourage health, healthy lifestyles, supporting economic prosperity, and promote the protection of natural resources. And whereas Oakland County Parks and Recreation will should the village pass create funding programs for local cities, villages, townships to help support local park and trail development efforts. Now therefore be resolved, the city of Hazel Park officially declares its support for Oakland County Parks and Recreation ballot question on November 3rd of the 2020 general election. Would you like to elaborate?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Again, I would request council approve this resolution and endorse the county parks knowledge. When I worked for the Sheriff's Department, I was attached to the County Parks Division and I got a chance to patrol all of the amazing Oakland County parks. They're a wonderful resource for the people of Oakland County. And I'm glad that the Oakland County Parks Commission has expanded Grand Oaks Water Park and also Oakland Catawba Oaks Park to better serve all the residents in southeast Oakland County. So the administration requests.
Counsel, what would be your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I'm in support of the Oakland County Parks and Recreation.
Second.
Support, any more discussion? Comments? Dissension? Motion passes. Mr. Klobuchar, Resolution 10.021-20, Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. A resolution proclaiming domestic violence awareness month. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, income levels, and sexes, and shatters families and communities. And whereas in the United States, over 1,800 women are murdered as a result of domestic violence every year. And whereas three out of five Michigan women are affected by domestic violence. And whereas thousands of individuals in Oakland County are impacted by domestic violence each year. And whereas domestic violence and abusive family members can take many forms, including physical, sexual, emotional, and psychological battering, where abusers use intimidation, threats, isolation, and a variety of behaviors to maintain fear and power. And whereas domestic violence can be prevented with the development of educational programs. Every citizen has the ability to aid and assist who are suffering from domestic abuses and let victims know that support is available through shelters, hotlines, and other services. And whereas domestic violence is a tremendous concern among community leaders, police, judges, advocates, healthcare workers, and concerned Americans as they work together across the nation to develop solutions to this serious problem and to implement services that will improve our responses when it occurs. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a time to increase education and intervention efforts to improve public awareness of the severity of the crime and to help prevent violence and reduce the related cost to society. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Hazel Park is hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have further resolved that October 13th will be recognized as Purple Ribbon Day, a day dedicated to spreading the message that domestic violence will not be tolerated in our communities by supporters wearing purple ribbon and cloak. We have further resolved that the city of Hazel Park applauds the efforts of organizations such as Help Against Violent Encounters now Haven for their dedication to eliminating domestic violence and treatment and prevention services across Oakland County and surrounding communities. Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests approval of this resolution designated October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Can I get a motion back, please?
I moved to, since I sought out this resolution, I moved to approve this resolution.
Support. Any more comments on this resolution? We're done. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, I just want the people of Hazel Park to know. Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan referenced this in her comments about requesting this resolution. I want her to know that she, I want the residents to know that she, Chief Foucault, Signator Melissa Schwartz, Chief Story from the Fire Department, and myself, we all had an opportunity to participate, and Judge Brian Hartwell. We all had an opportunity to participate in a meeting with Representatives of Haven for the purpose of establishing a high-risk response team for domestic violence here in the city of Hazel Park. And I look forward to working with those individuals to make sure that that team is a success. And we work very hard to prevent any tragedies in the future.
Yeah, and what was this up to civic announcements? I'd like to recognize our county commissioner, Helene Zach, on Zoom. She'd like to make any comments?
Hank, whoops, thank you very much. Let me get my video started for allowing me to speak, and I want to commend you on both of your resolutions. I was going to talk about the parks as well. From the standpoint that utilization of the parks has been greater than ever and protecting our green space. And I had reported a while ago, we finally opened our ORV park in Holly about a month or two ago. And so for those that like off-wheel vehicles, it is part of the county park system now, too. So thank you for the support for the parks. I think it's really important. They've done a really good job putting together this whole proposal. They finally showed me what it costs to maintain all the properties and what, how to invest in them over time. I do want to report about a new program that was announced. It is called the Safe for School Hotline. Oakland County entered into a contract using CARES money with Beaumont Health System to offer a nurse-on-call hotline from 5:00 to 8:00 a.m. in the morning. The telephone number is 248-551-4242. And parents can call up, you know, this hotline, ask health questions so that you don't bring an unhealthy student to school. It's part of our trying to keep people healthy, prevent COVID. And of course, we've invested in the public health nurses for all the school systems as well. I do want to remind people that Oakland County is still offering free COVID testing. And you need, it's by appointment only. You need to call the nurse-on-call at 800-848-5533. Flu shots are also available at the Health Department. We did pass a bipartisan budget in September. Has roughly $908 million budget. And Mr. Klobuchar, you'll be very happy to know that we put in road funding and that there is $2 million for the local road improvement program. So we are continuing to invest in infrastructure. There's also a couple million dollars for the tri-party road program as well, total of $4 million road funding. We have some other additional things to the budget that we added. There's an idea of $1 million for incentivizing some community policing programs to be continued, and I will report more about that. We also are going to do a request for a proposal to study having a new dispatch public safety training center built. You know, this is something that the sheriff, you know, good training is important for public safety officers. We also appropriated $400,000 to get rid of the green ooze. You know, that was along 696, too close to Hazel Park, too close for all of us. So we're going to help mitigate some of that environmental thing. And coming up sometime in the next few months, another effort to help eviction, land, you know, affordable housing, and we're going to create a landlord mitigation fund. And that helps. It helps landlords who might rent to somebody with lower income. It holds them harmless, and so I will, I will report back as we get that going. I still want to remind people there are Oakland County grants, CARES grants still available. Best place to find it is www.oakgov.com/covid. There is a cultural institution grant that is open until Wednesday for nonprofits. So if the Hazel Park Museum is a separate entity and a nonprofit or the Cultural Arts Group, I hope that you will submit money, submit a grant to the grant to get some money. Or get different museums, you can get up to $50,000 operational cost for museums or cultural groups. There's still opportunities for veterans, grant funding for veteran services, rent mortgage utility assistance. And coming opening soon, we are going to appropriate $28 million to help school systems with COVID expenses. And there is still continuing money for cities, villages, townships, libraries, senior centers. So I do hope that you will submit frequently and more, you know, for this funding. I want to make sure that we invest and help out our communities. And that's it for this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you very much for helping us in your budgetary process and hopefully you can help us out.
Thank you. Always a pleasure to work with you.
Thanks, Helene.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak for civic announcements?
Jesse Robertson here, Chair of the Hazel Park Historical Commission. I would actually first like to thank, thank you Helene's, or Councilor, Commissioner Helene Zach for bringing up that, and that is a definitely a good resource for operations such as museums. And actually, I wanted to bring up that aside from the scheduled regular meeting that the commission will be having on Thursday at 7:00 p.m. on Zoom, we will be open, I believe, from noon to four at the actual physical museum at noon on the 1st of October, which is a Sunday. That is our normal regularly scheduled period. We do take a lot of precautions to maintain, you know, safety, social distancing. We do have some degree of actual personal protective equipment and hand sanitizer there. And not very many people are showing up, so it is a pretty safe place if people are wondering if it was to go to during this time. And anybody who has an interest is welcome to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other civic announcements out there? If not, we'll close civic announcements, open up public discussion.
Mr. Mayor, before you open discussion, I think Jesse meant to say November 1st instead of October 1st.
Yes, thank you for correcting.
Thank you. Open up public discussion for the public. Anyone on Zoom want to talk?
I have one.
Who's that?
My name's Jessica Venture. I am here on behalf of Sherri Wells. I'm standing in for Sherri Wells. She is a candidate for, she's currently at a candidate forum, but she's a state representative candidate for the 27th district. She just wanted me to stand in for her today to tell you that she's visited your meeting before and has gone to activities in your city. She looks forward to representing you guys as the next state rep. She wanted me to forward that her promise is she's going to listen, learn, and legislate. And she wanted me to commend how awesome Scout Park looks. She remembered coming out and volunteering out of money Monday morning at the beginning and working with a lot of volunteers out there. But she really liked how different it looked now.
Well, thank you very much. Tell her thank you. And good luck. Anyone else for public comment?
Is this where we would ask about the new business? The banquet hall?
No, we'll get to that at the end of the meeting. Toward the end of the agenda. Yes, Jesse.
Okay, yeah, if nobody else is going to go. Um, I actually had a couple of things to ask about. First actually was about election concerns. That between a talk about a increasingly caustic election environment and also the other part making a double whammy with COVID, we are going to probably have things like social distance lines, which brings open a question, especially with potentially a new record turnout coming up, is how are we going to deal with potentially lines that could maybe not even fit within the painted, it's 100-foot circle that, you know, separates from where people are allowed to perform campaign activities and close enough to the polls where they aren't, which means some people might be waiting in line that could be outside of that. And the second part I actually wanted to ask about was I actually wanted to see if I could pull the the mural policy part, which is item six from the consent agenda for discussion? Because I actually had a couple of questions about that as well, as far as, because some of it came across a little unclear. As far as what was, is that like, is that policy similar to what we're seeing in other cities? Or what is prompting it? And similarly, what it means for potentially extant murals such as, for instance, the, I believe it's called the Tickle Monster in, at Green Acres Park. And I was hoping I could get some clarification when that comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak public discussion? If not, we're closing public discussion. Places to the consent agenda council. The motion to.
A move approval of the consent agenda items one through six and nine, but I would like to discuss item six, the mural policy.
Any support?
I support.
Okay, now we can go into discussion.
Mr. Carroll shouldn't discuss. Moving to the item one, I'm not sure.
I think you could just discuss it right now as part of the consent agenda because the rest of the things are kind of controversial.
I want to make sure that this ordinance makes sure that it's clear that this ordinance does not pertain to private residences.
I, may I?
Sure.
So I, I don't believe this is an ordinance. This is an administrative policy.
That is correct.
Again, I want to make sure it does not pertain.
This, this is specifically Jeff put language in here. This is specifically to our commercial corridors and there's specific zoning that's in here. Jeff, is Jeff there? Okay, Jeff is there. I get a conversation on the side about residents not being included under this ordinance, I believe.
That is correct. This is only applicable to commercial people that wish to put a building or put a mural on a sign just to make sure that we run through a consistent policy in regards to, and Amy can supplement this comment. The purpose is to create a more consistent application process for the purpose of making sure the city's consistent and that there's a process that the folks who want to have murals understand. There is a little bit of confusion in regards to the permit denial section that Ms. Councilmember Aubrey pointed out. All appeals would go to the administration and then it would go through the normal sign ordinance process, but all appeals, if our council didn't feel like, or denied a mural for whatever purpose, then it would be appealed to the administration.
I just, I want to ensure objectivity, not make the decision-making process subjective to a business, somebody that, you know, like. The, an example of this is a mural down on a business near a pile and jar. I particularly do not like cartoonish looking type stuff. But far be it for me to decide that other people don't and what type of art people get to. No, I don't want to do that. But see, the thing is, is a regulation like this or a policy such as this can stifle the creativity and the very items we seek to encourage.
We don't want to be the taste police. You're absolutely right.
So I'm wondering if there's a possibility of making something that might state, and I don't know what other cities are doing, and I don't know what it is. And I appreciate all the work that people put into this. I really do. But I'm just wondering if there's a process where it might, it's a shall approve unless kind of thing. So maybe, you know, this might be, because it's a draft, I know it's a draft.
It's what we'd like to, I think we're looking for action tonight on this. Go ahead, Amy. I'm sorry.
So I was wondering which section Andy was proposing to put shall approve? And then if I can, I can give a little bit of background on this policy that, why I'm proposing it and how it was created.
Right, how can that transition, because it was definitely this, I was going to say this was brought to our attention, the need for this was brought to our attention because of a mural that was placed on a building in the city by a business that was not, it was, it was just spray paint on the side of the building. It was not completed. It was not in any way tasteful. It was, it was really.
Well, I'm not, I'm not proposing to.
Yeah, so that's why, that's where it started. That's where it started at.
I just want to make sure that.
And a big part of that was to make sure that we're not, this isn't about like saying you can't do that because you don't like it, but we want to make sure that everybody has the same policy that they all follow. So there's.
There's got to be some standards for quality, some standards that, you know, that so the mural is not offensive. And I know it's difficult to put in place verbiage to specifically guard against that while maintaining the freedoms of expression. But I think they've kind of got a pretty good balance here amongst all of these things. And again, if you run into problems under this policy and it is just a policy, it can be changed at any time by a simple vote of majority of council.
I just wanted, these are the concerns I thought about.
Yeah, you raised, you raised valid concerns.
And on here as well, you know, there's, there is room for people to have permit, to pull the permits so the city can follow up and make sure it doesn't.
Yeah, well, the maintenance and lifetime.
But I guess our protection.
Right, lifecycle, right, of the mural. And so Mayor Pro Tem is correct in her statement that this was brought to our attention when we had a mural that was just plain awful. So.
Yeah, it didn't compare. They had submitted, Amy's next, I promise, Amy, I'm sorry. They had submitted a, an image, and then what was created had no, no relevance to that image whatsoever. It was really.
No resemblance.
Yeah, it was really, it was really bad. It was bad, unfortunately. Sorry.
So the, what Alyssa said is correct. What ended up happening, and the city ended up deciding to have the building owner paint over that mural that was bad. It was, it was bad. It was also submitted without a permit. Currently, murals are supposed to go through the sign approval process. And we've decided to make it clear that a mural is not necessarily a sign. And we felt that it deserved a distinct process that was not relied upon strictly the administration for approval, which is why we were pressed to include the Arts Council, which is made up of a diverse group of individuals, many with a background in art, so that we could get a good diverse point of view for the review of art. And again, you know, so that we're not the taste police. And so this way, additional information needs to be submitted on an application and not just, here's what I'm going to do and here's the dimension. So we wanted to be able to have a more thorough review, make sure that there were safeguards in place to protect against, you know, hate symbols, stuff like that. As well as making sure that there was some review to make sure that something that was a mural was not also a sign. So we, we tried this policy out most recently on Sky Mint, Stug's Delight, and House of Shamrocks. So we kind of used that, tried it out. There was a lot of discussion. There were actually several revisions made to the Sky Mint mural because its original submission had the business name in it. It also violated the policy because it had references to marijuana in it. So this way, we have an official policy that allows us to catch those things before paint goes up on walls. I'm open to any recommendations, but I will tell you, so when I, I worked with Jeff to develop this, I pulled from very, from mural ordinances from places like Grand Rapids, Battle Creek, cities that have very strong art scenes across the country. But I also toned a lot of the language down, recognizing we're not, you know, a community, you know, that hosts an event like Art Prize that has very, very, very strict criteria. So I'm open to any recommendations. I do have two typos and then the language correction that Jeff and I spoke about for the permit denial as well that I would like to make. But Andy, where was it that you were? Um, but Andy, where was it that you were proposing a language change?
I hadn't put that into a particular sentence or item number. I was just some, um, just reading through it, it was the process of approval. And I thought that. I wanted to consider that they shall approve unless it's. Is offensive or shall approve unless certain things. Cause you have a certain criteria. Which is fine.
But can you really set criteria for a, for art? Like I, like I, I know what you're trying to say, Andy, but I didn't, like, I don't know, like trying to set criteria. Because then if you set criteria that direction, it seems like you're limiting to me, but.
That's what I don't want to do is limit more. I don't want to.
I mean, really what you guys were talking about is obscenity, offend, you know, and then. And, and sort of the argument is, is making sure it's a public benefit, which just means art. Uh, yeah.
It's a very constructive message, really, and not constructive.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but it also needs to match the proposed mural. So if you propose a mural, then the artist that creates that mural should have the technical ability to recreate that mural. That, that is what we came into contact with, was a, an underqualified artist that was proposing a very beautiful mural and then did not follow through.
That mural, he, he painted it, it did not look good, so he painted over it to try to make it look like something different. It still didn't look good, so he painted over it. By the end, he was done trying to make something look good. It still just didn't look good. Um, and he had no problem painting over that mural, uh if I recall at all. Uh, but this is what we want, is we want, we don't want, you know, somebody who's trying to paint the first mural. Um, to be on, you know, a, a prominent building in the city. It is a little bit of quality control, but it's also a, a regulation to make sure. That somebody doesn't paint a large mural that is actually a sign on the side of the building, doesn't paint something large and offensive on their building. But it's just, it's something that's, this is something that's changing in the city. And we need a policy that goes along with this because the sign policy is not sufficient for regulating public art. Which unfortunately needs to be regulated to an extent, because again, we've even got, you know, you have to tell us how you're gonna maintain this artwork. Um, because if you're not gonna maintain it, um, it's gonna end up deteriorating and not looking good. So these are some of the things that we're, we're just trying to make sure that, you know, as this, this grows in the community. We have, you know, beautiful pieces of artwork that stay for a long time. And also to prove that you have, it's also in here to make sure that you have permission of the building owner. Um, and that, because sometimes people do things without their landlord's permission. Um, so we want to make sure that that's in there as well. Um, and then real quick while I'm thinking of it, Jesse. Um, this would not pertain to the tickle monster. That uh mural was on public, public property. Uh, city-owned property, so that would go through a different process, which it, it did. It went through a review process with the city as well. Just not this particular process.
Amy, um, was this based, did, did you pull in Berkeley at all? Because I know Berkeley, I thought, had a policy now, because I know they're really pushing a lot of um murals in their city. Do you know, was that brought in at all? Or Jeff could probably speak to that, I guess, but.
I don't recall, and I am not at home where all of my research is. Um, I could let you guys know after the fact exactly which uh policies I pulled this from. But I did, I did combine this from about five or six different policies. Um, from not just across the state, but from across the country.
I, I was just curious as to how Berkeley was handling theirs.
Um, yeah, I don't recall offhand.
I can speak on that a little bit. I reached out to Berkeley a, a few times to try to get information and was unsuccessful multiple times. So I also don't know how Berkeley handles it.
I actually think it's partly through their DDA, which is a different process.
Oh, okay.
Cause it's all within their DDA. Um, and their DDA, as some know, was going through a bit of transition, probably when Alyssa was actually contacting them.
Yeah, it was rough. I was like chasing contacts and then the contact would be different or disconnected or not available anymore. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Lucero is satisfied with his questions, so the administration would recommend that you adopt the policy.
Motion's on the table, support any more discussion, hopefully not. A dissention to the motion. Motion passes. Great discussion.
Yeah.
Feels great. Uh anyways, administrative reports, resolution ten point zero one eight. Dash twenty, adoption of the master plan. Mr. Povicher, I wish I'd be talking to Mr. Campbell.
Well, I'll start out. First of all, Mr. Mayor, I want to recognize Mr. Campbell. Uh, the planning staff as well as uh everybody else who worked on this, including the. Uh, planning commission, city attorneys, uh Seri Pabakian. Uh, and of course, McKennan Associates as well. Uh, I think this is a, a very comprehensive. Uh, master plan that we have. I'm very proud of it. Uh, I'm very grateful also to Mayor and Council for all of your hard work on this process. And I will turn it over to Jeff Campbell to see if he has any additional comments to make, but I'm gonna recommend that you obviously adopt the resolution.
Yeah, and we have, uh, hopefully Sarah's on the phone, if Sarah's there. She said she was cutting out, there she is. Um, but basically, I'll just be brief. Um, this did go, we did do um tons of publications on Facebook. We got some, maybe one or two comments from uh citizens about the plan, particularly a DDA member. Uh, we also got a comment from the MEDC who said it looked great, um, which was very kind as well. And they were a part of the early public uh process or participation process as well. But Sarah can speak to, this goes through the Oakland County, uh, and actually, I believe Councilmember Aubrey was on the call. Along with Planning Commissioner and Library Board Member Barbara Winter. Uh, where the uh Oakland County had a committee, a zoning committee that reviewed the process. And had nothing but really nice things to say about the plan. They made three uh minor, one editorial and then two minor recommendations. Uh, highlighting things. Um, but it was a great process and I can't say enough nice things about Adam Cook and Sarah Traxler. And the planning commission did a lot of work. Uh, it's been a long time coming for this process and hopefully we're through it tonight.
Motion, please.
Of the resolution and adoption of.
Support.
More discussion, session, motion passes.
I think you got in before I did, Amy.
I pushed really hard to get this, this in motion, so I was like, I gotta make the motion or support, but Andy's best I am.
Uh, amendment to title five, adding chapter five point zero seven, use of city seal and flag second.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, again, we're offering this up to you for second reading. Uh, again, you were briefed on it uh at the last city council meeting. This is an order to protect the use of the city as well as the citizens.
Motion to adopt on second reading. I get a motion to adopt a second reading.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Oh, you got it?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, Alyssa.
Someone make it. I called you, Mike.
All right, I'll make a motion uh to um, to approve, uh, on the second reading. Uh, the amendment to title five, adding chapter five point zero seven, use of city seal and flag, second reading.
I'll support.
Any more discussion? The session, motion passes. Places to administrative reports, item three.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution extending the uh ability for us to approve outdoor dining. In our city's business establishment and the administration requests uh extension of that. So if we continue to have this, obviously, the uh COVID situation is still running. And we need to be able to be flexible and uh adopt this outdoor dining. We continue to monitor this. We may come to you for some uh more permanent revisions in the future, but in the meantime, I request approval.
I'd like to make a motion to uh approve the resolution ten dash zero one nine dash two zero, outdoor dining renewal.
Support.
Discussion, session.
This quick discussion. Uh, as a former member of the uh service industry. I, I really appreciate how flexible and understanding our city has been in adapting some of these spaces to help our, our restaurants survive here. So thank you.
Uh, also, we received a lot of kudos from the MEDC again on our, how, how we manage this.
Yes, a lot of praise and it's great when you get praise from third-party entities. They spend a lot of time evaluating the policies of other communities and they're speaking very highly of what we've been able to accomplish here. Keep our residents open and keep them vibrant and keep them cool. So uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Council.
Uh, I would also like to add just a little bit to that, like when other people are looking to open a business, they take notice of these things, so. And hopefully they will move to Hazel Park and open their business.
Yes, come here.
Uh, motion passes, we're all done with that one. Like for designated lounges.
Uh, Mr. Mayor Council, what we're doing is, last time we, uh, in early September, we amended the ordinance, uh, the course of ordinance. Specifically, well, not just, this was part of it, we opened it up for designated consumption lounges. What we are proposing is to open the application process for a two-week period, starting tomorrow, going through October twenty eighth. Receive uh the available two licenses. Uh, and then you will make, you will submit a report and make our determination. Make it a different, previous direct process.
Council.
I would uh move approval that we uh open the designated consumption on application process.
Support.
Discussion. I have one quick comment. Should we, or should we not have given a little more notification to this? Ten day notice before we open up.
Yeah.
I didn't know, just to give everybody a fair opportunity. Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Central, motion passes. Okay, takes us to the show call steering of two, three, one, one, three, Cayuga Avenue. Is there anyone here from that address representing two, three, one, one, three, Cayuga Avenue? Like to open up the public hearing on two, three, one, one, three, Cayuga Avenue. Being no one here representing two, three, one, one, three. Uh, Cayuga Avenue. I will close the public hearing. Council, what would be your uh decision on two, three, one, one, three, Cayuga Avenue? We've all received the confirmation.
Mr. Mayor, I would move the recommended motion based on, on the following, the structure is non-conforming. And we will require it to be brought up to the twelve hundred square foot with a basement or thirteen hundred square foot without a basement. Um, the current owner failed to follow the hearing officer's order of one twenty-two, twenty twenty. And have this property demolished himself by uh March eleventh, twenty twenty. And based upon the substantial repairs required to bring this property to code and hearing officer's orders. I'd recommend that we move to uh have this structure demolished within thirty days because of the unsafe condition.
Support.
Guys, support.
Support.
Any other discussion from council members? And uh, dissention. We have a motion that has passed. This house is done. Places to the boards and commissions, anyone having.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, there are two appointments at uh. The administration is recommending Lillian Ristau and uh. Victoria Upcott to the Arts Council, is that correct? Amy, you know, Alyssa.
Victoria would be to them.
Oh, sorry, okay.
The other one doesn't.
Lillian is Arts Council, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, Lillian's been attending our, our meetings with Arts Council and we've asked her to join.
Okay, I just, there's two different applications.
She filled out the volunteer opportunities instead of the boards and commissions' application.
But, but we're, uh, I, I've spoken to Ed and, and Ed was already on top of that.
That application, that is a specific application for uh animal control volunteers. And uh community emergency response team.
I know, we were all like, um.
So that will be uh. Deleted.
Okay, so Victoria up at, right?
She's going to Historical Commission. And Lillian is going to Arts Council.
Do we need to make separate motions? Uh, I would like to make a motion to appoint uh Victoria.
It looks like up.
To uh the Historical Commission.
Support.
A dissention, discussion, motion passes. And second one.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lillian Ristausa that he's a Parkers Council.
Support.
Dissention, discussion. Motion passes. Okay, city boards and commissions, table items, none, new business, make a case of people. I brought this to uh administration's attention, and I know that people have as well. There's been a lot of uh. Problems with the site as far as noise and slaying out in the streets of some of their patrons that uh rent the facility. Causing a lot of havoc in the neighborhood and the neighbors are not uh too terribly pleased. Is there anyone here representing the facility? Uh, let's see.
Two, one, five, oh, two, Gana. Uh, the Ivy Room LLC, and I believe the business is going by the name of Timeless. Is uh, hopefully they have, uh, their attorney is present.
Yes, I am present. My name is Attorney Fallon Moore, P eight four, two eight one. I represent this Erica Reed and uh the Ivy Room LLC.
You've received the complaint that uh we fought for, and we've received your letter. We're questioning about why there's not anyone on staff there to control and monitor. The facility whenever it's being rented out and we need to, there needs to be somebody that's not there at all times.
So, why don't we, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Obviously, uh, based upon order of the mayor of the city of Hazel Park, this license at this time has been revoked. Uh, this is your appeal process to make your case before the city council. Mr. White, uh, you should be, uh, the business that you represent should be allowed uh to reopen. So the floor is yours, Madam Attorney.
Take away.
Well, why thank you. I'm sorry, are you speaking to me? I can barely hear you all.
It's your turn to speak about your, you know, your appeal.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Having problems with my audio. Um, good afternoon to uh, to all present, for mayor and members of the council. Um, this appeal, well, first of all, I want to state on the record or during this proceeding. Um, that. I don't believe sufficient notice was provided for this hearing. I filed the appeal on Fri- just Friday, this last past Friday. I received written, a written email notifying me of today's hearing. Um, although it was, it was, it wasn't detailed to me verbally on Friday. Um, I don't think that that is sufficient time to prepare adequately for this. But I will indeed um rely on the notice that I provided in response to the complaint. Specifically to answer your question, I know the question was just posed, I'm sorry, I, I'm not for sure of who was speaking. But the question was posed as to why or if there is management on staff at the facility. And yes, there is in fact um an individual or a staff that has been hired to manage the facility. Um, there is also full-time security now at the facility. On the night in question, which is the August thirtieth date, there was an individual. Um, who was in fact hired in a management capacity. Um, who unfortunately did not make the best decision and acknowledged the officers when they arrived. Um, and, and you know, so that. Um, and, and you know, so that, that was definitely, um, a bad call on their part. And my client takes full responsibility for that. And since then has modified not only, um, you know, her business practices, but has as well trained her staff and, um, you know, to adhere to all policies, you know, whether state or local law. And, um, again, she's also hired, uh, you know, security guards, and there is management of the facility at all times when an event is occurring.
Um, if I may, um, I would like to address, um, uh, Ms. Moore's, uh, concern about the hearing scheduled today. Pursuant to the Hazel Park ordinance, a hearing is scheduled by the clerk upon receipt of an appeal, and it shall be scheduled for a hearing before the city council at its next regularly scheduled hearing, so therefore it is proper to have the hearing today.
Ms. Schwartz, I appreciate you, uh, reading that ordinance or statute. I read that as well. And I'm sure that, that generally it just does not fall probably, it, it, how often do you have, how often are these meetings conducted? How often are the city council meetings conducted? I'm curious, I don't know.
Once in two times per month.
Okay, a couple times per month. Okay, understood. Okay, well, I, a- again, I mean, I, I agree to disagree. I understand that that is the, that is the statute, but, um, you know, I, I don't think it's sufficient time to prepare for this, but go right ahead with any other contentions that you may have.
Um, Ms. Moore, did you receive a copy of the letter dated September twenty-fourth in this matter? That was signed by the mayor and by Mr. Campbell?
I did.
All right, and so, um, today is October thirteenth. And because the ordinance does require that this be heard at the next regularly scheduled meeting, um, uh, we are in accordance with the ordinance.
Understood, and I'm prepared to proceed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let's get to the heart of the matter here. Um, there's been some violations. The dumpster being one of the violations where garbage is spilled along the back and the business, and flows into the neighbor's yards. The other, the other question would be that the patrons of your facility are laying out on the streets at one in the morning and twelve o'clock at night, twelve point o'clock at night, and parking in other, just other areas that are other business parking lots. And the neighborhood is a little bit of an uproar there about how the, what they're gonna do about the noise and people just hanging up in the middle of the street. And I know that you can't always control what someone does when they leave your facility. But on the other hand, it would be good if there was proper signage telling people that they must not disrupt the neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor, uh, City Attorney Schwartz, if, uh, it's appropriate, Melissa, I'd like to read into the record, uh, the complaints listed in the letter that the, uh, business owner received.
Yes, that would be appropriate.
Okay. Uh, one, failing to ensure the safety of patrons. Two, trying to supervise and ensure the actions of its patrons comply with the laws, ordinances, and licensing regulations of the city of Hazel Park. Uh, three, uh, ensuring that this does not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding areas. And four, uh, ensure that did not interfere with the neighborhood's quiet use and, neighborhood's quiet use and enjoyment of the property. Uh, unfortunately, as the mayor had laid out, there have been, uh, some violations of these, uh, particular, uh, in, these particular requirements that have been laid out for you, and, uh, we are wondering, uh, if you have any specific, uh, explanations for these violations, or if you propose remedies.
In regards to, if I, if I may first respond to, um, the violations that were listed, the dumpster violations, uh, the patrons being in front of the building, if I could respond to those first, I'd appreciate it. Um, in regards to the dumpster violations, my client did indicate that there was an issue with the dumpster. I believe, uh, the trash was overflowing or something to that effect. She was advised by an administrator of, uh, Hazel Park to remedy the issue and within a certain timeframe, and she did in fact do that. Um, and I believe the consequence was to receive a ticket or something to that effect if it was not remedied within a time, within whatever the timeframe was. Uh, my client did in fact comply with that. Any other violations with the trash or, or any others? I'm sorry.
Uh, Mayor Potem, Alyssa Sullivan, just visited that alley today, and as did, uh, Councilman Andy Lucero. Both of members of this body visited today, and both body, both members of this body witnessed the dumpster in the middle of the public alley, obstructing the public alley. Uh, it's been overflowing on numerous occasions. Uh, again, obviously, the dumpster cannot stay in the public alley. It is a nuisance in and of itself, obviously.
Um, if I may please also add, um, it's my understanding as well that, um, due to the concerns for the public health, safety, and welfare, that, um, the fire, uh, chief and or marshal also visited and, um, determined that the alley was blocked from any emergency equipment that could come through due to the dumpster in the alley as well today.
That is a correct. And that was the fire chief. The fire chief is here on Zoom meeting. He can speak.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, we went, myself and the fire marshal went by this structure today. Uh, there's a small gor- uh, GFL dumpster blocking the public easement there, the public, uh, alleyway. There's very, very limited room. Uh, we could not conduct fire operations if there was an emergency there.
Uh, sir, Fire Marshal, was there a ticket or, or any sorts of, um, disciplinary action behind the, the, the violation that you just mentioned?
I, I informed the city manager of this today. Other than that, no, there hasn't been a ticket in, uh, given by my, my department.
Okay, understood. And I, I'm just curious, has there been sufficient notice of this, of this trash problem? Have there been any tickets issued? The only incident that my client is aware of that, or at least that she made me aware of, was when she was verbally told to, you know, rectify the trash issue and to, you know, remove it from overflowing, and which she did immediately. So I'm curious to know if there has been any sort of, um, any sorts of, uh, notice such as a ticket or, or a letter or anything.
Hold up. Hold up, Madam Counselor. I'm sorry, Madam Counselor. Uh, we were technology, Zoom technology is wonderful. We were completely, uh, disconnected and we didn't hear anything that you said.
Oh, I, I.
Sorry, uh, if you could please, uh, start over. I don't even know all of what I had to say, but, or what Melissa Schwartz had to say, or sorry, but. Or Chief Story, uh, please go ahead and start over again, Counselor. I'm sorry.
I, I, I hate to interrupt, but I actually have to leave the meeting. Um, so I just wanted to let you know as to why I'm leaving. I have to go. I actually have to work. Sorry.
We understand. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Take care, Mike.
Bye.
So anyways, uh, getting back to, uh, the question, I'm sorry, Counselor, you were discussing the dumpster.
All right, I'm sorry, are you, I didn't know if you, if you caught, uh, the Fire Marshal's comment. Did you want him to proceed or did you catch that?
Any of the Fire Marshal's comments, you know, we did not catch any of your comments, uh, except for two seconds before we unmute it.
Understood. So, sir, Fire Marshal, if you want to proceed, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that they didn't hear you either.
Yes, ma'am. Um, myself and my Fire Marshal, I'm the Fire Chief Counselor. Um, we drove by this property today. Uh, there was a dumpster in the public, uh, alleyway blocking the, um, passage of any kind of emergency vehicles. I let my city manager know at this time. Uh, we did not issue a ticket or anything like that. Um, this is a building department, I believe, uh, concern, uh, where they would notify you of the business owner more so than we would. Um, but that, that comes from, uh, Mr. Clovisher and the mayor and council, whether they would let me to write a letter or if it just go through the normal channels. Uh, the reason we went by there was to check occupancy rating. Um, and these are just some of the things we saw. Uh, I believe, maybe to clarify your question, uh, when they got the garbage ticket, um, uh, initially, maybe they had like residential garbage cans and she just thought that buying it, or renting a dumpster would take care, rectify this situation. Um, that's great, other than it isn't in a approved location. So that's the problem we have. It's not the, at this time, it's not the overflowing of it, it's the location of it.
I can address the garbage ticketing issues if, if you'd like. Um, Amanda Mason, um, Assistant City Attorney. My understanding is you were, that, that your client was indeed working with, uh, some of the code enforcement officers. The garbage overflowing still i- is an issue, just not as it pertains to, uh, Chief Story and emergency vehicle access. My understanding and speaking directly with Kim on this issue multiple times is that there would be complaints after an event. She would contact your client. Your client would be very cooperative, but this happened on multiple occasions. On the last occasion that this occurred, she was set to ticket for the dumpster. However, at that point in time, the mayor had intervened. There was the revocation, and so the ticketing was put on hold. Um, you know, not to, to dump all of this on your client at the point in time that the revocation occurred and then this, the suspension occurred and this was scheduled. Uh, that's why the tickets were handled the way that they were. That would be the normal process of the code enforcement officers here try to work with everyone. They try to see if they can get responsive action taken by business owners, engage them in the community, get them to perhaps engage. My understanding is that this problem started because originally your client had some sort of agreement with the business that shares the space, but there was some sort of a breakdown in that relationship where their dumpster was no longer uh, be, your client was no longer welcome to use their dumpster because of concerns and problems that had been occurring that sort of lead us to where we are here today. Um, and that, and that's why there weren't tickets that were issued. She was trying to work with your client repeatedly, but every event, it's overflowing. It's been multiple times, including today.
Okay, understood. Ms. Amanda, I do have a question. Okay, so you, you indicated that my client was definitely very responsive, and, um, you know, each time she was approached in regards to the overflowing of the garbage, she corrected the problem. Okay, so in regards to the placement of the dumpster, I'm just curious, um, Mr. Stewart, if in fact, if, if, if it is a code violation or some sort of safety hazard, has that information been communicated? Because essentially, as Ms. Amanda just said, you know, my client is very responsive and, um, you know, will definitely try, you know, to rectify the situation, not to have an issue. So I'm wondering if that information was conveyed, that it is in, in the improper placement.
It is. Yes, my understanding that, um, Code Officer Kim Green did have multiple conversations, um, with your client regarding the concerns.
Regarding the placement of the dumpster or the overflowing of the dumpster?
I, uh, I mean. Both. And really part of this issue, I guess, just cut into the chase of what the real issue is, is the event space as it was proposed in the, um, applications for a boutique s- sort of it more intimate gathering type space, and I think part of the overflowing issue that seems to be prevalent here is the fact that everything's sort of coming in piecemeal as to what this property is being used for really in the scope of things. And had the business plan just been laid out to bear fully for everyone to look at and appreciate some of these overwhelming issues that perhaps more court officers, the Fire Marshal, the city manager, et cetera, could have said this space is simply not all that suitable for these many reasons. These are the issues you are going to have every week with the neighborhood with trash. There are certain things that would need to be done. Um, and, and honestly, that seems to be a lot of the heart of the issue if we want to just cut right to it, is that when you say we want to have a really unique boutique small space, I mean, this, this strip mall has thirty-eight parking spots in it combined for both businesses. Um, I mean, that's, that's where we're at. There are limits with the trash issues because that does have a narrower, um, alleyway than some of the other businesses that are there, and so unfortunately, and had your client, you know, just been upfront with, this is more the vision of what we have. It could have been pointed out to her some of these issues because you can't have a dumpster in that, in that alleyway at all. And you can't have a dumpster in the front parking lot because that's not appropriate. You know, I mean, honestly, if you have so much, you have to have special arrangements being made, or you're gonna have to have an internal trash thing. I mean, that's really what the heart of all of this is coming down to, is it's just an inappropriate space for the scale of what she's trying to do, and I mean, to, to cut right to the heart of the matter.
Understood. A- and Amanda, just kind of, right, piggybacking off of what you just stated. Um, you referenced the application for the business license. You stated that, um, that, you know, that basically she applied for a license for a small intimate business. I'm just curious, is, is that, I mean, is that subjectively stating? Because looking at this, I don't see a, I don't see a indication of how many people will be present. Um, you know, I, it says event space for baby showers, bridal showers, et cetera.
Right.
Or is, is there something else? Maybe I, I'm, am I missing another page or something to that effect? I'm just curious to know where that, um, you know, kind of subjective notion, you know, i- i- if I'm missing something, please.
Well, also from the benefit of the building that is thirty-eight months. Excuse me, if I may. I think it's very important to bring us around to the September twenty-fourth letter. And, um, we have four items that were laid out within this letter that were signed by, um, our honorable mayor and Mr. Campbell. And I, I do understand, um, that, that it was proposed that we address these four items. Um, and I, I do think that it would be important to kind of come back to this because these were the items named within the letter that was signed for the revocation. So the first thing is failing to ensure the safety of the patrons, and the question before, um, counsel, um, for Ms., Ms. Reed, um, is asking what do you, how do you want to address that concern and, or are you proposing some kind of a remedy to that concern? And that was the question that was initially presented, and I think it would be important for us to kind of redress that. So failing to ensure safety patrons, item number one on the September twenty-fourth letter, please.
Uh, yes.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Hold on. Hang on, just a minute. I just want to let a couple of the residents that live in the streets talk for a second, and then we'll get back to the three attorneys. Okay? Uh, there's a Ms. Crouch Johnson that would like to speak. She asked earlier, is she still there?
Yes, I am.
What? Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Lisa Crouch Johnson, twenty-nine East Madge, Hazel Park, Michigan. Um, I have spoke to several of my neighbors. I've only called the police one time due to noise, which was, um, this past weekend. My windows on my house was shaking. Um, my daughter is special needs. Um, she wears earplugs when she's in noisy situations. Um, this is a every weekend occurrence. We have people in our front yard. We have dishes. There are disposable dishes in our front yard. Um, I talked to some of my neighbors earlier today. They all didn't know about the meetings, so a lot of them can't be here. But they, I found out, had been calling also and complaining. Um, there's, people sit in their cars and do all kinds of things. It's loud. The business next door to me, they had a bride on a car and they were in the rain posing and taking pictures. The business is upset because they don't want them parked in their lot. Um, because if something happens, they get hurt. Um, he has been coming and staying after to be able to tell people not to be in his lot. Um, it's just, it's loud. The people do not wear masks. The neighborhood, um, it's one, two o'clock in the morning before it breaks up, and then you have everybody going down the street and screaming at each other like it's the middle of the day. And the p- street. And the street is, it's halfway down the street of cars parked. And nobody has masks on. And it's just very loud and very disruptive.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak, it's on the screen. Okay, hearing no one, close that part. I think that, you know, Kirby Brown, counsel, maybe the attorneys need to sit down and go over these four particular items and work out a probationary period. Mr. Mayor?
There is, there is a recommendation that Amanda Mason.
We, we have a recommendation here. And again, I would strongly recommend that city council adopt those recommendations. And again, I will, if it is okay with Ms. Schwartz and with Ms. Mason, I will read into the record those recommendations.
I would like to say a lot of those recommendations were made also. Ms. Schwartz had been working with Fallon Moore. She's advocating zealously for her client here today, but the position has always been that they want to work with the city to rectify the problems.
Ms. Mason, in that spirit, I think that we believe that to be the case. However, we also are confronted with, you know, an overwhelming amount of evidence here that there are issues and problems with that business that are having an adverse impact on the neighborhood. So based upon that, and again, I do understand that there's a willingness to work with us. I have several recommendations that I would like to make, that I would request the council adopt as members of their business license should they continue to operate in the city of this park. First of all, an in-building dumpster enclosure must be constructed. An in-building dumpster enclosure must be constructed with a door through the alley with all license permits and inspections conducted to make sure that the in-building dumpster enclosure is compatible with our codes. This business must find and develop a shared parking arrangement for twenty five additional spaces. A representative and door manager must be on site at all times when this facility is occupied. The business shall cease operations at nine AM. Nine PM, pardon me, thank you, Mayor Protem, shall cease operations at nine PM. No outdoor activities whatsoever without prior approval from my office. And finally, occupancy in this non-negotiable has been set by the fire department and fire marshal at seventy six persons. Also, no alcohol may be consumed on the premises. That's a recommendation that was just texted to me by Mr. Campbell, because there are problems with that.
Okay, we have an understanding.
Well, some of the recommendations were modified because Melissa and I had spoken with the fire chief as well, which is why there were additional.
I, I, I've witnessed some of the events happening at this location. I thought it was a great idea to have what was originally presented to us and in the applications repeatedly states, baby showers, bridal showers, baby showers, bridal showers, baby showers, bridal showers. Every application says the same thing. Baby showers and bridal showers are daytime events. So this was, in my, in my opinion, presented as a daytime event space, which I love the idea. But it is currently being used as more of a nighttime and a nightclub event space, which frankly, is, it's not conducive to the continuity of a neighborhood. This is not a downtown area. This is a neighborhood area. It is in, it is in a neighborhood. They are, the the houses are ten feet, fifteen feet from the back of this building. I absolutely understand their frustration and I understand their displeasure with the way this is operating. On saying that, I absolutely hope that we can find a way and a workability between the city and this business owner and this business to move forward because I do think it is a great benefit to our community to have this type of business, to have this type of business owner in our community with a different vision of what retail space can, or what storefront space can be used for. And I really hope that we can come to some sort of agreeable situation where not only our needs and the residents' needs are met, but the business owners' needs are met as well.
If I may, I I definitely, I appreciate that. And I just want to, just want to note that the application that I have here is dated April twenty second. And it describes the business activities clearly as baby showers, birthday parties, graduation parties. And it indicates that the venue hours are on Fridays and Saturdays from ten PM to one AM. So I I do understand, you know, your point and the the idea or notion that it it was presented as a, maybe a daytime event space, but I I'm just a little curious as to how that was interpreted when the business hours are listed on the, on the.
And hours stay ten to twelve and ten to one. There's no AM or PM in that area at all. Monday through Thursday, ten to twelve, Friday through Sunday, ten to one. There are no AMs or PMs on there. None.
Well, if you take a look at the eleven twenty six application, it definitely says two PM to one AM, Sunday through Saturday.
You were, you were referencing the April twenty second application, and that's the one that I'm going off of because that is the most.
Yeah, so so both. And 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 I'm I'm sure that I'm not, again, I'm not for sure of how subjectively it was interpreted, but again, I I don't know if anyone else was under the misconception that it was a daytime rental space.
Anybody else?
I think everyone was under the impression this was a daytime event venue.
Absolutely. This is not even the place to have something open till one AM. The the four twenty two twenty application clearly does state ten to twelve and ten to one with no AM or PM. And I don't recall graduation parties or even baby showers, bridal showers going on to late at night. I don't attend many baby showers and bridal showers, but
Yeah, there's going to be changes made and there's going to be restrictions tonight. And again, the administration has, you know, we made our recommendations and I would strongly encourage council to adopt those recommendations. If Ms. Mason or Ms. Schwartz have anything to add, can I request that you stop this time?
Yes, I I do understand that there was concern about some walls being removed or moved. In speaking to Chief Story today is, and also in addition of, I believe, a kitchen, an onsite kitchen. And therefore, I am not aware due to late hour whether any permits were ever pulled for that work, whether inspections or final inspections or approvals had ever been provided. So to the, we would like to request that an inspection be performed to see, you know, what is the status of this. Is that your understanding, Chief Story, as well, from your visit today?
Yes, ma'am. The, looking through the windows, those are the observations I made. Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, inspections to that. Jimmy, could you read back my
In in-building dumpster enclosure must be constructed with door to alley and all permits pulled, et cetera. Shared parking arrangement for twenty five more parking spaces. The facility should be managed at all times of occupancy, must close at nine PM at the latest. Outdoor activities must be approved first by the city manager. Seventy six person maximum occupancy, which is non-negotiable. No alcohol allowed on premises. And then the big one from the city attorney was an inspection to be performed.
Do I have a, do I have a motion from the council?
If that was all put into motion, that's the motion I made.
Do I have a support from the council?
Counsel, if I, if I may ask.
I need a support from either one of the other council members to, Councilman Lucero's motion.
I actually didn't hear the full motion. The motion was to accept those.
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Do I have any more discussion from the council members?
I I do have some discussion because I want to know why we are eliminating their ability to have alcohol on premises. I do know that there are limitations to that, but I want to know why specifically we are limiting that. And I I feel like that might be non-conducive to their ability to continue to run this venue for these types of events. I've never been to a baby shower or bridal shower where they don't have like, you know, a champagne punch. Or if we're expecting this to be a daytime event, I would expect there to be brunches and alcohol served like that. I know that we do not, if you are not, as a, again, a former service industry employee, there are limitations and there are permitting, but if you are the owner of a venue and you are not directly serving the alcohol, the same permits don't apply to somebody that needs to have, say, a liquor license. So I want to know where the legality in in our ask of that comes from.
Melissa?
The alcohol must comply with all state and local laws. What we're discussing is the fact that there were patrons spilled out all on the public lot and streets with open intoxicants at the August party, and that is strictly prohibited. As far as the state and local ordinances are, we are trying to enforce those laws. Not to say that we are saying, you know, that we're trying to supersede any state or anything like that. But certainly, we can and shall put down, in accordance to the ordinance, that the patrons should not be spilling out into the public streets and neighborhoods with open intoxicants.
Can we reword that in the recommendation then, to better reflect that as long as it's in compliance with the law? Because the way it was read is it sounded like we were completely prohibiting. We're prohibiting unless in compliance with the state law.
Correct. And that's my concern. I don't want to remove the ability of a event space to have a baby shower that has a champagne punch. I I mean, that seems, I I can't imagine that even successful.
Well, how about if we take a look at it together? Amanda and Jeff and I will take a look at it. We'll communicate with Fallon as well, of course, and we'll address that.
Okay, if if I could, just for sake of brevity, we'll delete that one and have council apprehend us. Councilman Lucero and Mayor Protem will amend their motion that that item be discussed between our attorneys and their attorneys for an appropriate resolution so that we no longer have any issues with potentially intoxicated patrons in the neighborhoods in future.
Yes, I would accept that amendment.
I also would. I mean, it's already illegal to be drawn from somebody's lawn, so. And that's, we obviously want to prevent that, but I don't think we prevent that by preventing a business from posting events.
And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but our our goal here is to simply protect the neighborhood. So, you know, I think everyone welcomes ongoing dialogue, but these actions I think are necessary in order to make sure that there are no further problems with the business in those neighborhoods. So, well, those restrictions being imposed tonight, we welcome ongoing dialogue between the business owners, attorneys, and our attorneys to continue to work for that and to keep a clean, safe environment. So.
Thank you. That motion passes. Yeah, just say if anybody, anybody else You've got the requirements from us and you'll talk to our city attorneys with your clients and get back with us and hopefully we can come to some kind of resolution to work out for the business aspect and for the city. Thank you.
Absolutely. Can I say one final thing before we conclude on the matter?
Sure.
I just want to, number one, ensure that in the interim, until this is decided, is my client allowed to continue operations under these guidelines in the interim?
Yes, under these guidelines, your client may continue operation. You may consider these laws reinstated at this point. But there is an expectation of one hundred percent compliance with the requirements that were outlined tonight.
Understood. One final thing, I do have a request. The, my client has several events that have already been scheduled and also paid for that flow well into the twen- the nineteenth of December. Some of these events are scheduled to end at midnight per the, you know, per the former guidelines or regulations or stipulations that were on our application. I'm asking if the council will consider allowing those events to proceed as 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 they are already scheduled. And if I may, if I could communicate with Madam City Attorney and we can kind of communicate, I can send her the dates and the type of events that have already been scheduled. I actually have a list of them here, if I may, to allow those particular events to conclude.
Counselor, could you please submit that list of events to the city attorney? This is a suggestion of our Mayor Protem and the mayor and the councilmen here tonight. They would like to see a list of those things and we will consider that. And they will empower me upon consultation to make a decision with our city attorneys.
We're not trying to make this a hardship. We just want to have peace and morals and tranquility.
We don't want any problems.
For our neighborhood and to keep a nice event going. We'd like to have a hall. We haven't, we've lost a couple halls over the years.
It's not a hall, per se.
Might I suggest that whoever the manager is, maybe perhaps go in and meet with the police department, introduce him or herself so that we have a contact person and maybe win some good favor and we know who it is.
That would be good. Thank you.
Absolutely, I will advise.
Ms., as we discussed when we met earlier, we welcomed that list and I provided you with my email already. So I'll look forward to that list to share with administration. In addition, can we please get the dumpster out of the alley as soon as possible, immediately? It is a hazard and it's dangerous because the fire vehicles or the emergency responder vehicles are unable to get through there, per our fire chief earlier today.
Yes, Ms. Schwartz, I will definitely advise my client to move the dumpster. I do have a question, though. It was indicated that the side portion, I believe you, someone indicated that the side portion, she can't put it there. It cannot go on the front. If you could just direct me to where, you know, to tell her where to put it, I would appreciate it.
If you give me a call tomorrow, we'll be happy to talk and we'll keep good lines of communication open. And we'll be in, we'll make sure and we'll get all the right departments to get that information. So if you want to give me a call in the morning, I'll look forward to working together.
Will do. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Will do.
And just to clarify for the record also, it's a scheduling of a special inspection, I believe, special inspection.
That is correct. We will make sure that, and that's something that you can schedule with the attorney and the representative of the business when you discuss these matters with them tomorrow.
Yes, thank you. We'll work together on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, communications from department heads, any other department heads like to speak tonight? I like, I got a quick, I need a quick update from the police chief on the barricaded gunman. Would you like to give us a brief, in the public, a little brief comment about how this was? I'd like to say, and I'd also like to say thank you to your department, the fire department and everyone else involved, Oakland County Sheriff's Department and your support and all the forces that was there.
Appreciate the thanks. We are very fortunate that everyone came out unarmed. Besides the victim, I'm sure that emotionally and mentally that's very traumatic for her. He was arraigned on a domestic violence charge and I he did have to go to Oakland County Jail. I don't know if he's bonded out. he did have to go to Oakland County Jail, I don't know if he's bonded out at that from there yet, but it was not a substantial bond. And I believe there was no contact order put in place with the victim.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just want to thank Chief Pukul and his officers as well as personnel, Chief Story and the personnel from the Hazel Park Fire Department, as well as Sheriff Mike Bouchard and the personnel from the Oakland County Sheriff's Department and their special team up there that did an extraordinarily good job. City of Ferndale also assisted us. Again, our personnel are highly trained, as are the personnel of the Oakland County Sheriff's Department. And this is a successful resolution to what could have been a very dangerous situation. So again, my hats are off to the courage and professionalism of the men and women of these departments.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, for your update.
Thank you.
Any other department heads wishing to speak? Nice to see you here, Chief Story.
Hey, evening, mayor. Hey, I'll talk about Halloween, it's behind us. So when you guys go out trick or treating, be aware of those little guys and girls out there. Make sure if you are trick or treating with little ones to have a flashlight or reflective clothing. Try to follow the guidelines that are put in for your city to, I think it's six to seven-thirty, Ed, is that correct for trick or treating?
Recommended guidelines, yes.
And also, we have, I believe it's November first, it is fall back. So when you change your clocks, make sure you check and change your smoke detector batteries, keep yourself, your household safe. And I wish everybody a happy Halloween.
You too. All right, let's take us to the city attorney, would you like to speak, either one of you? There is no one.
She's muted, I think she's good, though.
Okay.
Let's wish her good health.
All right. Okay, it takes us to the city manager.
Well, Michigan's system of municipal finance remains fundamentally broken this October two thousand twenty. We're facing one of the most contentious elections that I've ever seen in my life. And I've been a follower of politics since I was, since I was a kid. Yes, I was a nerd, gosh, who would have ever imagined that? I just want to remind everyone, we are all Americans. And please be respectful of opinions that differ from yours. Remember, after this is over, we're going to have to come together and that we're going to have to unite as a country. And we're going to have to meet the challenges that are impacting us. So I would urge everyone to do their research on the candidates. Look to see who you think will do the best job. Take your vote very seriously. Don't believe any of the campaign commercials that anybody is putting out there. And do your own research and make a good decision for the future of this country. Because no matter what happens, we are all Americans and we need to be kind and respectful to each other. Don't forget the nonpartisan ballots as well. And thank you very much for everybody who came out. And thank you for those of you who attended in Zoom. I think those three of you who are here in person, I wish Councilwoman Aubrey a fantastic time where she is. And again, I will look forward to seeing you all here next month.
Okay, Councilwoman Aubrey?
So want to thank everybody for joining us tonight and Jeff for putting me through my, my, through my first Zoom test on my iPad. I haven't had to do this remotely before. Wanted to quickly mention, now that we've approved mural policy, I forgot to mention, city council sets the fee for a mural permit. Currently, we are waiving fees associated with that mural policy. So if you are a local business and you've got a great idea for a mural to put on your building, keep that in mind, but please do fill out the application when that becomes available. And I believe McKenna has probably left us, but I want to thank everybody with the city staff as well as McKenna. One of my tasks when I, after I was elected was really pushing to get a master plan. We hadn't had an update in two decades and I thought it was really important with all the changes that we've been seeing as a city. You know, even with the racetrack leaving, everything, it was really important to get a master plan, to put in writing all the great things that are happening and all the great things that we see in our future to help guide the decisions that we as a council are making. So I want to thank everybody for their hard work, for helping to make that happen. I'm very excited to have that approved today. And as I said, I'm, I'm done. I'm on vacation, so as soon as this is over, I'll see y'all later.
Happy birthday, Rob. I'd like to recognize the owner of Ink Detroit Apparel Wholesale and Retail, I just realized he was here. I'm sorry about that, sir, so tell us about your business.
Well, how are you?
How are you?
Our business has been around since two thousand five and we're an apparel company. We, we design, print and wholesale our product to about sixty-five stores throughout the state of Michigan. We were in a previous, our previous location was in Ferndale, we, we outgrew that space and luckily we were able to find this beautiful building in Hazel Park, which we're, our goal obviously is we're currently fulfilling all our online orders, doing all our production. And we've got a little bit of a retail space in front, which we're hoping to get approval for so we can go ahead and start promoting that as a business that's open in Hazel Park.
Well, I'd like to say thank you and welcome to Hazel Park.
Thank you.
We appreciate you moving here, we, we treasure good businesses and will, you know, help us out and grow.
For sure, and if you guys need anything, obviously, reach out anytime.
You have big, beautiful walls that would look great with a mural, I'm just saying.
Yes, I know.
We're sorry we missed you, welcome to Hazel Park. Very happy you're going to have a stage of contact, my office, if you need anything.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're approved, right?
Yeah, you're, you're approved at, at the beginning of this.
All right. You got to have a, have a great week.
Councilman Lucero?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I just want to thank everybody for coming out and participating on these resolutions about breast cancer and domestic violence are very important. So if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. If you have teenagers, sometimes when they least seem like they are hugable and lovable, that might be the time they really need to hug them most. Have a great night, everybody. And happy Halloween.
May I approach him?
All right, I have a few things. First off, the, there was a ruling today that the census is going to be ending early. So I encourage anybody, if you have not filled out your census form, you can do so online at twentytwentycensus.gov. As long as that website is operational, you can still fill out your census form. It's super important to do that because that is how cities and states get funding. So please, please do it, literally takes three minutes. Also, I wanted to congratulate our new appointees to boards and commissions. We are always so happy when people are willing to get involved. And I think it's really a, a great honor to have so many applications recently, so thank you all. Also, October is a month full of national days. We have the beginning, the first week of October is Fire Safety Month, which is something that is super important to me. Thank you, Chief Story, for speaking on that. Also, it's National Domestic Violence Day and Month is November, I mean, October, rather. We're all wearing these purple ribbons today in, in celebration of the recognition, recognition of the importance of, of these services that we're trying to get incorporated into our city. Also, October eleventh, we just missed it, was National Coming Out Day. This month is also National Breast Cancer Awareness Day and National Pregnancy Infant and Child Loss Awareness Month. So lots of important things that happen in October. And then, of course, the most wonderful time of the year is Halloween. So that's coming up at the end there. So just be kind to the people in, in your circles and some recognition on those. And also, I wanted to give out the Haven phone number again for domestic violence and they service all genders. That number is eight-seven-seven-nine-two-two-one-two-seven-four. And we did recently, not here in Hazel Park, but they were Hazel Park residents, we did have a, a woman who was lost to domestic violence. And I just want to send my sympathies to everyone that knew her, her, her children, her family, her friends. It, it's just devastating to me when something like this happens. So thank you all and be safe and be kind.
Thank you. Happy Halloween, everybody, and I just want to kind of let everybody know that to be safe and be cautious of your surroundings. I'd also like to say thank you to my council for coming out and participating in getting through a very cumbersome agenda and topics that we may not always want to talk about. We're not out to hurt businesses or take their licenses away. We just need them to be good citizens and work with the neighborhood and be compliant so that everyone can get along peacefully in a very safe and, and way. I do want to say a little bit about the election as Mr. Klobuchar, he said a very nice speech of how we should all work together. It's our, democracy is very important. And it's, it's very important to get out and vote and use your democratic rights November third. It is a, a lot of countries don't have the democracy we have here. We're a very proud country, very opinionated country. And I think that we all have to work through those issues, but together at the end of the day, like our city manager said, we need to come together when this is over, no matter what. Work through our differences and be respectful to one another. And with that being said, I'd like to say thank you again. And again, please remember, everybody has an opinion, work together. We all try to work together here and we all differ on all our opinions on every topic. And on some times, and other times, we totally agree. And we can make the best of it, thank you, good night. Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Turn it on.